Last school renovations, the request of for authorization to award contract for general construction. Do I have a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Fairley, does anyone have any questions, Mr. Fairley?
I do.
Okay, go right ahead.
And I'm sorry, this is not, this is indirectly related to the contract. I know we received a timeline for the construction some time ago, and I didn't know, you know, if we're still on that trajectory to be able to open next fall, you know, or how are we doing compared to the timeline?
Yeah, we're still on that trajectory, the projection to open in the fall. We've negotiated with this contractor and he's confident he can deliver it in the timeframe that we need it.
Mr. Fairley, how much did you estimate that this was going to cost us initially? I'm trying to remember.
Well, the entire project budget is 5.5 million.
Okay, all right, and where are we at?
And this puts us right there.
Right. Very good job, thank you very much.
You know, if there isn't unforeseen conditions, we're in good shape.
Well, I do feel comfortable looking at the bids when you see them that tight, it kind of makes you-
That's right.
Gives you a pretty good feeling that, you know, everybody's in the ballpark and because we, so I am glad to see that. So, any other questions, Board?
Last week, I went over to the Highland School of Technology and other STEM High School in Gaston County and had a tour, and it was interesting to me because they do have athletics, which is not in our original plan that I know of.
Ms. Baldwin, do you have a specific question to this contract?
It's related to the construction because I'm wondering about the athletic facilities.
Okay.
I know we're building a gym that's for the PE classes, and I'm wondering into the future as far as expanding, if we find that we need to offer athletic programs, like I was saying, the Highland School is a 1A school and they offer every sport. They're in a building that used to be a school, so they have, they do have ball fields around, they have access to a minor league park for baseball, too, that's just down the road. And that, those partnerships might be something we'd have to work out because is there any space here to expand? Is the gym going to be just a half a gym, or is it an entire, a whole gym? I guess my first question.
The gym is designed as a half-court gym. We have an opportunity to make it into a full-court gym in the future. There's a warehouse portion next to it that could become a full-court gym. We would need to, and in the 10-year plan, you'll see a line item in there for warehouse space. We are in real need of warehouse space in this building, and it's kind of a shame to use good heated, you know, building space for a warehouse. So I think in the future, the, that's something that the Board might want to consider, is building a less expensive metal building, basically, for warehouse purposes for the central offices, and then being able to use that good heated space, you know, maybe for something like a full-court gym.
Okay.
But I guess as far as outdoor fields, that sort of thing, is there any space that-
We don't have a whole lot of flat land around this building, as you, you know, well know. It would have to be, I would think, if you wanted to offer those kinds of athletics, like baseball, football, that soccer, that require a large space, it would, they have to be kind of a travel condition. I haven't looked around to see what is in the area that would be real close by, but I think if we get to that point, I'll be glad to do that and offer the Board an opportunity to, here's the opportunities out there.
And I was also wondering, because they also have a band slash chorus teacher, so they have a band room in their school. If music becomes important, is there any place that could be utilized for that?
We do have some real good future opportunities for growth. We've got, the design has, the STEM High School is kind of in the middle of that section of the building, and we still, we have some peripheral administrative uses on the outside. Relocate those as there's a need, you know, as STEM needs mount. We, yeah, there's spaces for STEM expansion. Of course, we have to find a place for those administrative uses, or as they change, they could move out to schools, or, you know, we're becoming more technology-oriented, perhaps the space needs wouldn't be as large in the future.
Okay. Any other questions, Board members?
And also just wondered if you could give a, just a quick rundown of what this all, what is included in this contract, as far as what spaces will be built. I know this was just posted today online, the documentation.
What's the general contract?
This is for the general construction. What we're focusing on in this is, is what we need for really the first two years. We're only going to have 100 students first year, and then maybe 80 more the next year, maybe 100 more. This does not involve every bit of build-out of the facility for a four-year school. We would, there would be places sitting empty, and, and I think it's an advantage for us to do the final build-out in two years when we know what the specific needs are, what programs are really hot, what technology is out there, because that stuff changes on a daily basis. So, that's the strategy, and I think it's a, it's a good one.
Okay. Board members, any other questions?
I just want to say, I would love to be able to vote for this. I think STEM education is very important. You know, I still feel that resources may be denied to our other comprehensive high school students by serving just a small-
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin.
-percentage of the population.
That's duly noted. It's been heard before, and we appreciate it, that we're, we're on this general contract. So if you have any more questions about the general contract, that'll be fine. All in favor?
I have one quick question, and I might have just missed it when I was reading it, but is there any, you know, similar to the intermediate schools, is there any way to recoup cost for weather, like extensions? I'm not sure.
It's going to be hard for, in this project-
Since it's more indoors, I mean, that we're not really affected at all.
Yeah, it's hard to get weather-
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Certainly not a contractor, I can barely handle a hammer, but I just didn't know if there was anything like that-
Well, we do have-
-concerned about.
We do have a kind of a double deadline for the contractor to finish, because it's critical that, that it gets finished on time, and there's related financial penalties for late finish. We have a finish for, to allow us to get in here, to get perhaps a temporary certificate of occupancy, so teachers can get in, get familiar with their surroundings, see where, what the spaces are. It's a new school, so that's important. And then there's a, another deadline with a financial penalty to get us in for the start of school, basically.
Thank you. That's actually, I guess, what I was really wanting to ask. I appreciate you, appreciate you giving me the right question, the right answer.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Amy just gave me something I'd forgotten about that I wanted to ask. Have we established design guidelines for construction in general, you know, that we're going to buy these certain parts? And I know other school districts have done this. I just wondered if we have those design guidelines.
That's an interesting question. When I first came here in 2000, it was one of my first tasks as the Assistant Director to write that, and it was a, it was, the book is out there.
Okay.
Things have changed so much that I wish I had time to rewrite it, but our, you know, technology, mechanical systems, the way we operate, the rate of change of how we operate, and how our structures have to kind of react to that, and how materials and construction change, I have not been able to rewrite that. But we do have a way, you know, maintenance has standards, and when we design, we involve maintenance and technology in the design, as well as the curriculum folks. So while I would not say we have a written Bible, we certainly do have our standards, and, and we adhere to them very closely.
Okay.
You know what, approximately what year you did the design guidelines?
I think we need to, I gave a little bit of flexibility there, but I think it's time to move on with that. So, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have, Ms. Baldwin is making the motion to request Mr. Dean Shatley to write a resolution asking the State Board of Education to reexamine the healthy active children policy and consider introducing more flexibility in implementation. Request the State Board of Education to look at 115C-81, E1 and E2, to make sure the current SBE policy does not overstep statutory boundaries. That Ms. Baldwin is making that motion, is there a second? All right. Well, we will move on then to the intent to award agreement for installation of fiber optic cable system-wide. Do I have a motion to approve that award?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'm sorry, could you, I wasn't caught up yet. What was the item that we're voting on?
Were the fiber optic cables, system-wide. Have a motion and second. Do you have any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and likewise, on the intent to award the installation of the wireless network switches, system-wide, do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Yes, I did have some concerns with this contract. I feel like the bidding, everything looks fine, you know, the three and a half million dollars for the network switches, et cetera. However, I, I have a huge problem, we had a comment about this, too, about putting the cart before the horse.
It's actually the horse before the cart.
Well, I think that's what he meant. That's what I mean, anyway. I have a really big problem not being able to see how the end user is going to benefit. I don't see a big, an overall long-range plan for this money, and there's opportunity costs. If we go with a Cadillac system, which is what it appears to be, you know, are we going to fully utilize this system from day one? I want to see us out there with the plan, ready to move, and maximizing this three and a half million dollar network. I don't see the plan, and I'm very disturbed by this. This has got to be something that I can see that is going to benefit the teachers immediately, that they can utilize this for, for learning. I don't see a plan for how the teachers are going to use all of this capacity. You know, I don't see a plan for maybe utilizing distance learning. It sounds like we would be capable of, for example, we're phasing out French, I believe, in the high schools, and if there's kids who want to take French, we could have one teacher in one high school, and, you know, we could be doing a virtual classroom and projecting that to these kids in all the other high schools. I want to see the plans for these things. I want to see that we are leveraging this technology, that we're getting the most for our dollar. And on the other hand, there's the opportunity cost. What can we not buy because we are spending it all on a Cadillac system that may have more capacity than we actually need? And in five years, if that's the time, by then we finally start utilizing this system, it'll be out of date again. That's why we, I don't see that we're ready to go from day one, as soon as it's all installed, to maximize this.
Dr. Fuchs, I want to thank you for presenting the plan to us in several work sessions. I think there's been adequate information that's, that you've supplied to us. You've done a great job, you and your staff. I personally see where we're going with it, and I think it's going to be a great system for our school now and in the future, as we add things to it. So thank you for presenting that plan to us several times.
Bob, that's not a plan, that's a PowerPoint. A plan is very specific, and I'm not seeing that. I don't see the long-range plan.
I didn't recognize you, Ms. Baldwin.
Does anyone else have any comments?
Mr. Chair, and I don't, I agree with what you said. I think it's important to note, and I don't know, I don't want to give credit to the wrong person. I don't know whether the public comment person made the statement, or Ms. Baldwin made the statement, or maybe both did, but I think it's important to note, and Dr. Baldwin, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have a lot of flexibility with this $5 million. This is, this is specifically designated money that came out of this session of the legislature, am I correct in that, that is specifically designated to go toward technology. And as a system, our MCAT group and the people that sit down in MTAC, and sit down and worked on this, the experts in the field, the people that understand this, their recommendation was move in this manner. Based on, I've asked questions, I've heard other board members ask questions, I've had a lot of information presented to me. I've had conversations outside of a board meeting with some of those folks, and I'm completely clear in what the value of the infrastructure work is, why we're doing it, why we need the switches, what it does for us long-term down the road, how it maximizes our expenses and the equipment we currently have and future equipment. But I do want to make sure, Dr. Baldwin, if you would, if I'm wrong, tell me, but that, that money, we couldn't use that money, I think, I just heard somebody tonight say we should, we could use that money for teachers, and that's not accurate, is it?
That is not accurate.
Okay, thank you.
And again, in my superintendent comments, I made this statement, and I'm going to make it again, for probably the 100th time, and that is, in school, in school funding, there are two, basically two pots of money. There are capital and there are operational. And in 99% of the time, there's no crossing between the two. This is clearly capital, this is, and you're absolutely right-
One time.
This is a one-time shot. And I can tell you, again, over the past three weeks, I've met with business group after business group, and a high percentage of those are IT people. And when I've talked about the decision that came through Dr. Fuchs and our MTAC committee combined regarding putting a high percentage of those funds with this one-time shot in the foundation of the infrastructure, all I have heard are high compliments, because too many school systems across this, across this state and across this country have made the decision to go into digital devices, because it sounds good. Public likes that. Is that a smart decision? What is the device? Does the device meet the state requirements? Because we're going to all online testing. Right now, we've not, we do not have a clear definition of what that device is going to be, correct, Dr. Fuchs? So one of the worst things we could do is to sink a sizable amount of money in devices, and let's talk about five to seven years, let's talk one to two years regarding devices. So this isn't about what sounds good. This is about making decisions, bringing in those that are in the field, including teachers, including survey that we've, we've put together, and establishing a foundation that we can bring any type of device. So you're absolutely right, Mr. Bryant. This is a one-time shot we got. We cannot mess it up.
Ms. Baldwin, do you want to ask a question?
Yes, I, I'm not finished discussing this topic. The question is, do the teachers have the skills to utilize this system? Do they need to be trained?
Dr. Baldwin, would you respond to that?
Well, are we talking devices? What are we talking about?
We're talking about the applications.
Foundation of having more efficiency, having a much, much quicker onset time, but using, and we, I don't know if that takes a lot of staff development, a foundation that we're putting in place of infrastructure.
But the plan is that you need to have applications to use on this system.
Absolutely, and we've said it how many times? You don't want the cart before the horse, or horse before cart, whatever, Chairman Reinhart. That's where staff development, professional development, that's, that's part again, and you, again, I'll say this for I don't know how many times, we have additional sources of funding that will connect with this. General Assembly just approved this past summer, a large pot of funding from lottery that's available throughout the state. We're waiting to see how that's going to be distributed, and clearly what we've heard from MTAC in looking at the, in looking at the direction we're going with this, is that that is a perfect opportunity to devote that funding to the professional development, to address exactly what you're correctly concerned about, and that is that we train our teachers to use the instructional technology.
And I also want to elaborate on what Pat said. This money is also for digital learning, and that means we could buy Kindles for the students that they could have their textbooks on. All that costs money. Right now, we have so many children without textbooks. We've switched to the Common Core, they need new textbooks. But what other school districts are doing are getting Kindles, they're getting the EdTech books put on there, their textbooks on the Kindle, which is a very cost-effective way, you know, as additions change, you can update, you know, automatically on a device like that. But I see no plan for this. I see, how are we going to utilize this money? We've only said, well, we're going to look at 3.5 million of the 5 million and do this with it, but before we decide that, we've got to have the overall plan for the whole 5 million, and we've got to purchase applications. We may need to purchase these educational textbooks. We might need to purchase Kindles to put them on, or iPads. You know, we, I don't see the overarching plan for all of this and how it fits together. I just see a contract here for purchasing, you know, network switches, and maybe it's more than we actually need at this point. We don't have these applications. You know, can students go online right now to see what was written on the smart board that day by their teacher? Can that hap, is that happening right now that if they want to go and listen to the lecture again that their teacher gave, for example, do they have the, can they access that on the computer? Can they access what was written on the smart board? That's, that's all a part of this whole big technology plan.
Okay. Ms. R, do you have something you'd like to add to the conversation?
We have wonderful technology facilitators that are out in the schools daily. With the monies that we are waiting for to be appropriated, we are designing a best, and I can't recall what it stands for at this moment, but a technology series for teachers. Our best teaching of how to use these devices, use software, purchase applications, comes from the work with the instructional technology facilitators in the field. Then they bring that information to the MTAC committee, and then larger purchases are made. We will always have to teach teachers how to use technology. Wonderful new teachers are teaching us how to use technology. So again, it's a two-way street. We are seeing good results from those facilitators out in the building. Now, again, they've, they just conducted 55 sessions over the past few weeks with teachers on how to do the online gradebook. So, you know, we're doing the work that needs to be done to make teachers feel comfortable in using the technology. There's a lot of new technology out there, so we are working alongside by side.
If I may, we're not going to be able to put three and a half million dollars into Oakland County schools by tomorrow evening. This is going to be a long process. We hope to have it done by June. Between now and June, when it will be available, we'll have plenty of time to make all those plans, and we are. We're thinking about it. We already have part of that schedule in place. If you would be able to look at the implementation, the rollout plan that I have, I mean, right after every school is up, we're going to have professional development on how to use that technology. So it's there. You haven't seen it all because it's not all completely developed yet, as this isn't completely built yet. We're going to be built in over a period of time. We're going to be built in over a period of time, and in that period of time, we have plenty of ability to modify and add and/or create all those other things that we need to make sure that we'll be able to use this technology on the very moment it is in our school system.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
You were going to say something a minute ago?
I'm fine.
Mr. Craig?
I'm fine.
Okay, anyone else?
I just want to close by saying, you know, I am all in favor of expanding, making our system work faster, you know, and upgrading network switches, but I can't vote for this unless I see a plan for the whole 5 million, you know, that includes the teachers, that includes the applications, maybe education textbooks for the kids. You know, it's all about the classroom, it's all about teaching and learning, and I need to see how it all fits together, the, I don't want to see a few pieces of the puzzle, I need to see the puzzle entirely put together in a long-range plan.
All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all right. I believe that we now have the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Could I move it?
Is there a second? I'll give, Mr. Plas made the motion, and...
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor, please signify.
Could I ask a question, please, about the academic calendar? Dr. Baldwin or Ms. Swanger, it always worries me, and you always put my mind at ease. Election Day 2014, I believe we're in school, am I accurate with that or not?
You are accurate.
And we will be, while it's an off year, we will have many more precincts than what we just went through with the Asheville City in a much smaller, we're okay with that because so many of our gyms, and we're okay with it. Okay, thank you.
All in favor of approving the...
Well, since, excuse me, since he mentioned the calendar, I have a question that I'm very concerned about, and I think Dr. Baldwin may be addressing this, I just wanted to check in with him. Schools like the community high school that are, start, that have a shorter school day that started 8:30 and end at 3, or maybe they end at 2:20, I'm sorry, or 2:30, because of the busing situation, is there a plan, perhaps, to do as some other school districts do, when they take the kids home later, bus them directly home instead of back to their home school, as you do in the mornings? Because the early release days are killers for those schools, because the kids don't even bother to show up because there's not enough time to learn anything, they're just on the bus most of the time. So that's my big concern with the calendar, or is there a way, maybe they don't have the two-hour early releases at the community high school or other schools, I don't know if early college is affected by this or not. That was my only concern with the calendar, is how it affects those schools.
Folks, in the future, if you want to have discussion about anything on the consent agenda, please let me know, and I'll move it off, please.
Yes, sir. Apologies, sir.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have several policies for first reading. We have, coming up in a couple of weeks, the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Convention, November 18th through the 20th, public policy conference in, is it Wilmington?
Yes, sir.
It's in Wilmington, December 5th and the 6th, and our, please note that our next Board of Education meeting will be on the second Thursday of the month, December the 12th, at 6:30. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.